Welcome to the March 30th meeting, uh, special meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free and public, righteous families, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with introductions down here to my right, please.
Dan Poison Ward five.
Brian Bunnat Ward four.
Harisa Perez Armandari Ward one.
Pam Hart Ward two.
Karen Matthew Ward three.
Connie Brown Superintendent.
Pat Gaudier at large.
Pam Albert at large.
Jason Lebec Mayor.
Gabriel Esposito student representative.
Mark Conrad Business Manager.
All right, at this time I'm going to open it up with public participation. Do you have any folks on the public who would like to come address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, I'll close public participation and moving on with our budget presentation this evening. Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much. There was a memo that went in your packet on Friday detailing some of the changes, and we're going to go over those with you this evening. But to start, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Tyner, who is the Director of Adult Education, to give her presentation regarding the adult education budget. Come on up Jen.
Both microphones should be working for you. Hello everyone, I want to start by leaving my, I think I lied about your microphone, sorry.
Nope.
A little, and then the wizard from behind will come right up.
No.
Testing. Okay, can you hear me now? Oh yes, now you can, okay, great. So, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight about adult education. My name is Jen Tyner, I am the Director of the Auburn Adult Education Program and the Lewiston Adult Education Program. It's a shared directorship, so we'll talk about that a little bit in a few minutes. So, just wanted to start out and give you a little bit of information about adult education, just to give you a context of some of the programming that we do. Wanted to show some pictures, so these are some of our learners. Adult education programming, I always describe it in sort of three parts. So, we do very robust academic programming. That programming can lead to an adult high school diploma or a HICET. Some of you may not be familiar with HICET, it's a little bit of a new acronym, but it actually stands for the High School Equivalency Test. So, you may have heard it referred to before as the GED. Most of us are familiar with that because the state actually used the GED for many, many years. Few years ago, we switched over to HICET. It's, it means the same thing, I always explain it to students, it's kind of like the difference between puffs and Kleenex. They're both tissues, they're just different brand names. So, it's a, it's a five-part nationally normed test, and so, in order to get your HICET, you have to pass all five components of the test. In addition to our academic programming, we also do workforce programming. So, you can see we have a picture there, we have primarily right now, our workforce programming is for certified nursing assistants, so we do have some partnerships with some local employers, notably Clover Healthcare and St. Mary's Health Systems. So, we work with those employers to be able to do some training for certified nursing assistants, and we also do have a contract where we do recertifications for CNA, and we work directly with the state to provide that service. And then the last part is the enrichment programming, and I think that's the part that most of you probably really do know about, because I'm hoping that you actually get these in the mail. These are our brochures that come out a couple times a year, and this is an opportunity for us to get community into our buildings and to take some classes that are really geared towards lifelong learning. So, there's pretty much something for everyone in here, and we always like to get recommendations for more classes if, if people have thoughts about what they would like to see added. So, I tried to give some information about, sort of some data, a snapshot if you will, similar to what you might have seen with some of the other schools. So, you could see in here for enrollment for FY21, in adult education, we look at enrollment, and we also look at individual learners. So, you could see enrollments are 387, that's the number of classes that people are enrolled in for academic classes for diploma or HICET, and that comes out to be 104 learners. And so, we talk about it in two ways because it, the enrollment is tied to funding, some of the funding that we're able to receive. We had 39.
Can I ask a quick clarification question on that? So, what you're saying is that you have 104 learners enrolled in 387 classes?
Correct, in FY21, yes. And that's just for diploma and HICET, okay? So, that you'll see, if you add all of the enrollments together, you would get a total snapshot of the number of students that we're serving. Because we have an adult basic ed program, and we have an ESOL program, so for English language learners. Those enrollments, other than diploma and HICET, our enrollments are really more one-to-one, so it's one class, one learner, unlike the diploma and HICET classes. So, you can see we had 39 learners in FY21 for ABE and ESOL. We had 44 workforce students and 93 enrichment students in FY21. For 22, right now, we're targeting about 50, we think we're going to have 50 graduates, and right now, the, the number that's next to 50 is the breakdown of what we currently have for people earning the HICET and diploma. This is the time of year where we see that push to get, to have people complete, so those numbers are going to go up. And then we had 34 learners who participated in some remote classes this year, and 12 learners who were considered credit recovery. So, those are students that are still enrolled at Edward Little High School who are taking classes through adult education for credit. We have a few different locations, so you know probably here, we have a classroom space up on the fourth floor. That's where we do mostly our adult basic education classes. We have, our primary site is at Edward Little High School, so we have an office space and some, like a computer lab space in the high school right now, and we leverage the classrooms after the school hours are done. So, you'll see most of our academic enrichment classes are happening over at Edward Little High School. We also have some ELL programming at the Congregational Church. They were generous to give us some space to be able to provide some ELL instruction during the day, and we currently do our CNA coursework in Lewiston, and that's because we actually have a, a full lab that we can access for both CNA and recertifications inside of our Adult Learning Center at Longley. The directorship is a split directorship, so it's a 65-35 split, which means that my week is split between Lewiston and Auburn. I'm in Auburn about 15 hours a week, and the rest of the time I'm in Lewiston, but sometimes that varies depending on what's going on and what needs to happen. We have three full-time staff, of course, other than myself, which would be the Academic Counselor or Assistant Director, that's Catherine Saunders. We have our Academic ABE teacher, and we have our Secretary Data Entry and Community Education. So, you might know Juliette and Earl, they're on the list of our full-time staff. And we have about 25 part-time employees, so that's the people who are teaching the academic classes in the evening and the enrichment classes and our workforce classes. So, our expenditures this, this coming year, we are budgeting a 3% salary increase and a 10% health insurance increase, and I think that's been pretty standard. Other than looking at the need to budget for those increases, we're, we're not actually looking at having to increase the local share at all, which is great news. In fact, you'll see that there's been a little bit of a decrease, and some of that comes from the fact that there's a new director, so I save you money, which is great, I guess. Bill Grant was a little more expensive than I was. So, there's some cost savings there, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the tuition piece, I think Mr. Conrad was going to talk about that too tonight. But we were really looking at some of the projections over time about how much money we were expecting to bring in through workforce training, and there's a lot of reasons why those numbers are off, but we felt like it would be more transparent and truthful to lower that expectation because we have not been bringing in the kind of tuition that was projected in the budget. The funding sources are broken down here, you can see that we have our local share with that slight decrease, that is the difference between the director salaries. Then, of course, we get our state subsidy, which is, right now, it's an estimate, but it's a pretty good estimate, it's usually pretty close to what we're going to get, and then our tuition and fees that we bring in to help with our costs. In addition to what you see in the local share and subsidy and tuition, we also have some grants. So, we actually have over $41,000 that we have for next year in grant money. The biggest is our AFLA grant, which is our Family Literacy Grant, and we use a lot of those resources to help pay for our adult basic education and our ESL classes that we, that we run. We also have a main college and career access grant, so we're looking at ways to build programs for our learners to be able to make that transition from a high school program to a college program or to a workforce training program. So, sometimes if people have been out of school for a while and they're looking to go back to school, it may have been a while since they've done some math or have written the paper, and so what we try to do is really target those learners and provide them with a free course so that they don't have to take any kind of remedial class when they do make that transition into post-secondary or to workforce training. We have our Continuity of Services Grant, which is really about professional development for our teachers and our advisors, and then we have a Community Development Block Grant, which right now is helping to fund some technology, some hotspots for learners, as well as transportation. So, in addition to the grant money that we bring in, we also do contribute to the general purpose aid, and that's through our reimbursement of programming for 16 to 20-year-olds, and so I've provided you with an estimate of what that calculation will be for FY23. That money goes into the general fund, I believe. So, for goals for this upcoming year, of course, we're very excited to be back in person and to have programming in person, but we all know that COVID has had a real impact on how much we've been able to do as a community, and so we're really hoping that next year, we can reengage with some really critical community partners. And I would like to have the opportunity to do more in the Auburn community because I'm kind of new to the Auburn community, so the more I can get out there and meet people and, and talk with employers, I think the better. We're looking obviously to continue to develop courses that will help our youth to access workforce training and life skills, so we try to think about how to create courses that will continue to do that for our youth, as well as looking to how to increase workforce training opportunities for adults. And Auburn's in a really great position because with the expansion of the CTE program coming in the next year, there will be a whole new world of workforce options for adult learners outside of the regular school day. So, really excited about that. Questions?
Okay, so now we move into the revenue discussion. Unless there are questions for.
Yeah, just one question. I love the workforce aspect, obviously it's needed. Have you been in contact with anyone from business development, Jen Bonig or Jay Brunchick?
Not specifically, no.
Maybe we can do an introduction as they start going around, just so you know them, and maybe they'll hear and help introduce you to some local businesses in need.
That would be great, I would love that, absolutely. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for that.
So, just to segue into revenue, looking at adult education revenue, a couple of points. The $156,000 number that Jen referred to earlier was an estimate of the contribution into the state subsidy that occurs because of our program for 16 to 20-year-old students. As she noted, the local assessment is actually declining a shade, it's been pretty stable year to year, so that's not moving much. The decrease you see in tuition and other, and I think, sometimes when you look at something with fresh eyes, you see something different. We haven't been producing tuition or expenditures offsetting the tuition anywhere near the level of $93,300 for five, six, seven years. So, we've reduced it, we've probably been bringing in a third of that or less, so we've reduced it by a third, which gives us plenty of room to grow in the course of the year without overrunning the budget, but is closer to a more accurate picture of, of a level of activity there. So, it doesn't reflect a change in programming, it's just a change in our budget practice. Okay, with that, so now we move into our revenue picture for our general operating budget. This first slide refers to our state subsidy from the ED279, that's kind of bureaucratic speak for the state form that we get every year from Augusta that says, here's your subsidy and here's how we calculated it. So, if we look at this year compared to next year, you can see the operating portion of subsidy is relatively flat, it's a decrease of $8,000 against a budget of 28 million, so it's basically flat. There's a significant increase in debt service now. The increased debt for the Edward Little High School is really, is kicking in over time, and the state is subsidizing Auburn at 88% of the full cost of the debt, so there is some local impact to that. So, just as you saw a large increase in debt service on the expense side, you're seeing a, a similar increase in debt service on the revenue side from your state subsidy. The total that we're showing of $32 million reflects what we actually have in our ED279 today. Now, a couple things can happen that would change that. Number one is the legislature could come through and increase or decrease the level of state subsidy from what's been projected by the Department of Education in, in past years, and you'll see this in a minute, it's tended to be much higher by the time the legislative session is complete, and we actually get more money than what they projected in the end of January, beginning of February. The other thing that can occur is you can have debt service that comes about during the course of their projections, and that's what we're looking at for Edward Little this year, where I noted previously, we're just going out to issue the second bond on the high school in April. We should have those numbers by May or June, and then the state will turn around and take that fixed debt, debt schedule and revise the ED279. So, that number of 1,127,000 is a projection, it will vary a little bit based not so much on principle, because next year we're just looking at our interest costs, but changes in the interest rate from our projection, but this is our best estimate from a financial consultant. So, eventually, we should see the ED279 subsidy projection going up by that 1.1 million. So, if we look at all sources of, now this is budgeted revenue, so we were just talking about what we're actually receiving from the state, but what we budgeted this year is about 1.2 million less than what we're actually receiving, and that's because after the budget had gone through the process to the voters for approval, the legislature increased the level of funding and we received additional money. So, we're actually budgeting 1.2 million less than we're receiving on our state subsidy for operations, and that does two things. That contributes to our year-end surplus, which is a good thing. It also means you can recognize that increase in this coming year's budget, so it appears as if our revenue on the state side is going up 1.2 million dollars, which is helping to absorb some of the increasing costs in our budget. And then we've talked about the increase in the state debt service. Your local assessment is increasing 1.3 million, and in a minute, we'll go through that in more detail. I would note, your local assessment tends to be your residual number, in other words, you look at what your expenditures are, you look at what your state subsidy is, what your other revenues are, what your fund balance contribution is, and your local assessment is what you need to make up the difference so you have a balanced budget. Other revenue, which you do have a detail too in your book, is just minor change. In your fund balance number, you currently have a fund balance of about 1.4 million at the end of June of 2021, and you're utilizing 879,000 of that in your current revenue stream for this year. We think we can increase that to 1.1 million based on the fact we should have a healthy subsidy at the end of this year, and that gives us some additional revenue as well. And so, you can look at the total of all of those different sources to, to match the expenditure side of the operating budget. Any questions so far? Okay, local, this is, this is the piece that everybody's interested in, it's your local assessment. So, as you can see, there's a, an increase in debt service, I'll go to the second line down first. The increase in debt service of 450,000 does anticipate the local share of that second bond, and it represents a 2.5% increase of the overall increase of 7.4%. The remaining increase is through operations, and there's a 4.8% increase that is necessary to balance out the budget with the other revenue sources. So, now we change our focus for a moment to look at proposed expense revisions to the budget. So, the superintendent has placed a budget in front of the school committee, it's now the school committee's budget. We're actually proposing some changes to that expense budget you have in front of you because budgets constantly move as new information comes to light. So, one of the things we can look at is the fact that we had originally projected out $20,000 for bonding costs for our fiscal year 23 capital improvement plan, and we've determined we don't need to bond for that, so that's a savings. Laura Shaw has been able to do some work in looking more closely at the special education judgment against the district in the cost of services, and we've been able to reduce that by about $18,000. We've, we're making an assumption that we're going to continue with our management contract with the city, and I think personally, I'd say it's been a very good experience to this point in time, and we have every expectation that we'll continue, but, you know, we do have a six-month agreement right now, but we're planning to carry it through next year, and there's a small difference of $3,800 if you look at the difference between the management costs we had under our old structure and what we would have with that new structure. We talked a little bit when Todd was here about the increase in the cost of the athletic trainer, and we're certainly hoping to be able to negotiate that down or find an alternative source of athletic training services or less money, but it would be prudent to increase our budget to reflect what we're understanding our costs may be. And finally, we've reduced our health insurance increase, so we're not reducing health insurance, but reducing the increase to 5% from the 10% we carried, and the reason we can do that is, just a couple days ago, we received notice from the MEA Benefits Trust that the maximum increase for health insurance next year will be 8%. Now, that maximum, their increases are mirrored to your claims history in the prior year. So, that 8% would be an increase that a district that had a very high claims history might be looking at. Our claims history last year was nine, 92% of our premium, so we're thinking we're going to be well below that 8%, in fact, we may be able to come back to you with a number that's below 5%, and we're supposed to get that, is it April 8th? Yeah, and so we may be able to come back to you further in the process with a further recommendation for a reduction in health insurance based on a, a firm number on our particular.[1800.13] rate, but we think the 5% is still a conservative number we can work with, given our expense history, premium utilization. So, if we, we take the, this total decrease of $318,000, the only revenue line it really impacts is your local assessment for operations, and it reduces that to a level of an increase of 3.1% in addition to the 2.5% for the debt service. And so, that's a revised proposal from the superintendent for where our budget should be in the coming year. Finally, we had had some discussion during our discussion of the CIP planning, and it had followed some discussion at the finance committee level about establishing capital reserve funds and the value of that and saving you money down the road, because you can save bonding costs when you have very expensive projects. And if you look at your unreserved fund balance, it can only be used for two things, either carrying it forward as revenue, as we proposed here, or for capital reserve funds to serve as a funding source for those funds. So, we're proposing here that we dedicate $250,000 in fund balance funds to be split between a new capital reserve account in technology and a new capital reserve account in Edward Little High School capital maintenance, for all the reasons we had talked about earlier. And we think now is a good time for that for a couple of reasons. One is, we're going to have a healthy surplus this year, so we think that's affordable, and two is, as we look at the construction of that beautiful new high school, we want to be sure we're doing everything we can to make sure we're maintaining that well over the life of that building. This would give us a beginning step in that direction. And then, once you've established it, every year, you can have the discussion of what should we add to that, but it's always a positive discussion, because you're building for the future with those balances. So, I guess I would leave it there. Did I miss anything, Dr. Brown?
You did not. You did well. Thank you very much. Okay. So, at this time, we also have the memo. Dr. Brown, is there anything in the memo that was sent to the school committee that you really want to make sure that we're highlighting?
I think Mr. Conrad covered it well.
Okay.
The memo goes through the different lines and amounts, and those are the same information, that's the same information that was in the slides.
Okay.
So, no, I think it's well done. The only piece is on page two, and that pertains to the mill rate. The mill rate for education would increase from $9.22 to $9.64, or less than .50 increase for education.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, at this time, the superintendent, and as you know, for, and to be, for those of you who haven't been through the budget process, all this time, it has been the superintendent's budget, and we've been providing feedback, asking questions, just being walked through every cost center, so that we have a full understanding of what that looks like. So, at this time, I'd like to have a school committee discussion, based on your thoughts of where they're at. Do we need to give the superintendent any type of directive to say what it is that you're thinking as far as cost centers or any pieces and parts of that? And then, basically, to do, you know, a straw poll from you, just to basically say, with the budget that we have sitting right here in front of us, knowing there may be some adjustments, would you support this budget? Thumbs up, sideways, or down right now? So, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is to really think about a discussion amongst, amongst us to see what we're thinking. Want to open it up?
I have a question about the unassigned balance.
Go ahead. Yep, just, yep.
I just have a question about the unassigned balance, which I think I should probably know, but if it were not put into this capital reserve account and it were used for future revenue, how would, what would that make the budget, revised budget look like? And sort of, you can answer that as extensively as you want, because I know that we would still budget for capital.
So, I, I think the idea of the capital reserve is that it can prevent the bonding costs that come with having to pay for expensive projects. So, for example, you could, well, here's a very good example for the Edward Little project. You're going to have an artificial turf field with a rubberized track, and every 10 to 12 years now, it'll be necessary to replace that, and current prices for that are between the two, be $700,000. So, rather than having to bond that in 10 years, you could put $70,000 a year into your capital reserves, so when that's necessary, you wouldn't have to go out for those bonding costs. So, it actually can reduce expenditures and have a positive impact on the tax rate over the long term. I think the question in looking at what you're budgeting for next year and beyond is trying to balance out utilizing the fund balance to limit tax increases, but recognizing that if you take too much of your fund balance all at once and put it into the budget, and then you don't have those funds available next year, you've got a funding cliff where all of a sudden, you're having to reduce your revenue, and that either drives up the tax rate or forces you to make further cuts in the budget. So, we're trying to balance that out. So, we thought, given the fact we're going to have a positive, a healthy surplus this year into the millions of dollars, we could afford to increase that fund balance to 1.1 and put another $250,000 to just get started on funding those capital reserves. So, I feel like it's not a really firm answer, because I think there's strategy to it in looking at the longer term. I'm not sure I answered your question.
No, you answered the question. I mean, I, I feel like, I'm going to say something, but in these first few years of the debt service, the burden is high, so it seems like just adding to that burden in these first few years, that's just being frank, at a time when there's already like inflationary pressures and stuff. So, I just think it should be out. It should be talked about. We should talk, we should have it out there.
Any other questions, comments?
Question. Do we have a, it's pretty new, so I'd imagine we don't. We have a policy memo surrounding the capital reserve fund. For example, what is the target goal, appropriation of that, how is it appropriated, what are we targeting for? We did this at the city council a couple of years ago, because we saw our city fund balance really was substantially increasing, and nobody knew exactly how much we needed, and when do we use it, and where really, why, why would we use it? So, we implemented a memo on that, but does one exist here?
I don't think so.
For the fund balance, historically?
Not to my knowledge.
Just, okay, just a recommendation. It might be good to have some backing.
Yeah.
Like your point, I mean, we want to have, what is our 10-year lookout on maintenance costs for the high school, including fields, and what is kind of our, our roadmap over the next 10, 20 years?
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other, so, questions, comments? So, I will, I was going to say, go ahead, Pat.
This is just a comment. We heard presentations from each of the building principals, some of whom are sitting out back, and I'm assuming from their presentations that they're comfortable with the budget, what you requested. Is that correct? Shaking your head, some of you. Okay.
Well, I think more would be wonderful, but.
Well, everybody, yeah.
Just saying, we'd like more, yes. However.
But because of the work that they did and the presentations that they gave us, I feel confident that we're probably where we should be with this budget. I'm speaking generally about the budget, not specific things. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else want to add a comment? Pam?
Excuse me. I just have a question, and this might be out of left field, but it's to do with the new school and the bonding and how the responsibility of that has been put on the school budget. This was something that was voted, and I know we've discussed this in the past. It was voted by the community to, that they were okay with increasing the taxes in order to pay for the school. So, I guess my question is, why is it solely the responsibility of the school and not part of the municipal budget as well as the school budget?
I can answer that. Yeah, it's, at the end of the day, it's all the city budget, and everybody in the city council, as well as city staff, understand that, and we're doing a lot of stuff at city council with that knowledge of that increase in bonding, because, because the voters approved it, the residents approved it, to increase the valuation within the city in order to cover that. So, yeah, it sits inside, it's like taking one money from one pocket, putting it in the other pocket. We know, nobody's holding this against you. When you come up to city council, we're not going to be asking, and we've said this for several years now, that you need to cut operations in order to fund debt service. Okay, that's not going to happen. So, it is two separate things, and that's why, you know, I appreciate the fact that this budget is laid out in such a way that it's, it's itemized as such. Okay, it is a significant item that needs to be treated just like any other cost center. But no, there's not going to be, well, you got to cut five teachers to pay for this. You know, that's not going to happen.
Well, that's reassuring, because that was part of my question, is are we having to make sacrifices on the school side in order to pay for those, that bonding, when it really is a shared responsibility?
It is a shared responsibility. I can't speak for all the councils. You might hear that comment, okay, when you bring this to city council. I've heard all sorts of comments, you can never predict, but I will say that the, the general understanding, the legacy knowledge has been there, that this is a shared responsibility. Okay, so.
Pat?
The other part, too, I'll add to what Jason said, was when we were, you know, trying to develop a project, there was this concerted effort on the part of the city side to, I don't know what you call it, when, when bonds go off, they're paid off, they tried to do it looking ahead to see that this was going to impact, you know, the future bond for the whole, the city does. So, that was done very carefully between the school and Jill Eastman and whom.
Twenty years. Yeah, we worked 10 years. I think we shaved off, I forgot about that. Great point.
Right.
I think we shaved off like $20 million in our outstanding city debt. Don't quote me. It was like $73 million in city debt starting in 2012. We wrote that down. We really were conservative.
Right.
Knowing the high school's coming to like 43. So, yeah.
So, that was done very conscientiously.
Yeah.
Purposefully, to get us in a good spot for the bonding.
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you for that history. I branched everything.
Yeah, I, I would agree with the mayor. I think all this information is great. Having, you know, nothing against Adam, but having a new set of eyes look at the budget makes a big difference. Having Dr. Brown look at it yet again for a second year is fantastic. I do like the fact that it's itemized, because again, yes, is it going up 5.6%? Yes, but what I care about is the 3.1%. You know, the 2.5% has already been voted. It's already agreed upon, whether it's the city, whether it's the school budget, like, like the mayor said, it doesn't really matter. It's, it's coming out of Auburn. You know, I think the other, the other important message is that, yes, it's a 3.1% increase, but I think this is my fourth budget, and we haven't had an increase in any budget for the last four budget cycles. So, actually, we had a decrease in one. I think it was $100,000. I think it was, you know, minor from a decrease perspective, but, you know, if you look at that over the course of those four years, the increase is actually pretty, pretty minimal. So, I think that's also worthy to note.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. I look at this budget as being very transparent. For all of you who spent hours putting this together, this is not easy work, which you, which you present us with, but at the end, when I ask for discussions and questions, there's not a lot, because the feeling that I'm getting from sitting up here is that this is, this is, and I think I can speak to the school committee, that we can stand behind. It's a budget we can stand behind. It supports school committee goals, which in turn supports students, which in turn supports our community. We are maintaining programs. We're maintaining positions. We are maintaining everything we need to maintain, increasing some or expanding some programming, but just honestly doing our level best, while all keeping in mind the fact that we have to be careful how we are impacting people's dollars and cents right now, which is really complicated and difficult. We understand that. But I will echo what Brian said. We have, it's been years, it's been a couple of years coming since we have had to put this out there. So, with that being said, anyone want the last final?
I don't want the last final, but I just want to give a perspective from the council.
Any final thoughts, I would say? Any final thoughts before I call for a straw poll?
Yeah. So, a council standpoint, this is my fourth, fifth school budget looking at now. They're going to look at the overall picture. I always say it's unfair to both the city council, as well as the school board, to look at this in a vacuum, because what we do not know is what the impact of increased valuation that the city's experienced will have upon the overall tax levy. Okay? So, in other words, the pie gets bigger, slices get smaller. So, if we have an increase in value, and let me put it in perspective, there's been a lot of talk about new building and new development in Auburn. Roughly, every new apartment unit that's built in the city of Auburn will generate $2,000 in annual property tax to the city. Right now, we have, I would say, in planning stages, various forms, or under construction, approximately 400 new apartments. We do know from stats that apartments, one and two bedrooms don't provide a huge excess into the school system, and we do know that we have a gap. We need, we could handle additional several hundred students. So, if you look at those 400, that's another $800,000 in municipal property tax gain. You know, the business of government is business, and by gaining those taxes, we can lessen, to Clarissa's point, really, and we're focused on this, lessen that future debt service for the high school. So, A, it's unfair. B, I think you're right in range compared to other municipalities I've been trending, or watching, rather. And what I know so far of the municipal budget, I think we're all in range. I would not be shocked, and I'm not, you know, this is not a, you know, a premonition by any means, if we're all looking at whether an increase in valuation or a cut in, in budgets or decrease of approximately $300,000 somewhere, again, a combination, to get the mill rate down to about 26 increase on the education. Could be wrong. It's a shot in the dark, but looking at trying to keep our mill rate decent this year, in anticipation of literally 1,000 new units coming onboard in the next fiscal year, that is, that's what we're going for. There might be a little bit of holdback or savings today until we can build that value tomorrow, if that makes sense. But again, don't quote me on that. It's just something for us to think about, okay, going into council deliberations.
Yep.
I agree. I think everybody did a wonderful job. I think I've only, I've done a few of these now, and I do have to say that every year, it gets easier and easier. I am not used to having a $40 million budget. So, looking at that, it's been, it's great having everybody come up, tell us what they want, tell us what they need, I should say, not what you want, but what you need. And I feel like everybody's been very fiscally responsible, and the new eyes that have been looking at everything, I think, have been very beneficial. And I think that the budget, as you said, it may have gone up a little bit, but it's the first time in a long time, and I think that we are doing a good job keeping, keeping the, the budget where it should be. So, I appreciate all your hard work.
All right. So, with that, anyone else? Last words? Okay, with that, I'm just going to ask you for a show of hands. Should you have, should you, this is just a straw poll vote, not held to this, this evening, but is there support from the school committee to move forward to the next step with a public hearing for next week? So, all those in favor of supporting this budget and moving it forward, raise your hands. So, basically, you have majority to go forward. All right, there you are, Dr. Brown.
Keep going, please.
And those opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed, abstained.
I have to vote on this at the city council, so I don't feel it's proper for me.
Thank you.
Vote on it here at this point.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Thank you for all of that, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we did not have a student rep report this evening. We will next week, nor is there a superintendent's report or school committee person's report. However, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for city council update?
I do, I do. City council, I think everybody who writes a paper, no, we're all about rezoning and trying to build some, some more valuation to pay for this new high school and everything else that we want. Let me take this, if you could please pass that down. On Monday's agenda, you'll see this posted Thursday online. There'll be a joint resolution proposed by the city council, which they'll debate upon and then potentially modify and vote on, encouraging both the municipal side of Auburn and the school side of Auburn to promote, encourage, and create a pathway for more dual education program offerings, utilizing on-campus courses at Southern Maine Community College, as well as the University of Southern Maine-Louisville in Auburn. It is a typical resolution format. Obviously, it's a resolution. It's not an order. I would very respectfully like to see this on the next school committee agenda, as it is set up to be a joint resolution for both bodies. I want to give you a preview of this before it goes public and before it goes to the rest of the, or goes to the city council in the agenda packet, and in case there's any additions, updates, or probably a couple typos, please ignore those. We'll fix those later. Send it out to me, and that way, we can include that and start talking about that on Monday's meeting at city council. And please read it, and if you have any questions, you can ask me online. I don't, it's not proper. I think you get into a discussion or debate now on this, it's on the agenda, but I just want to give you an update. The city council is very keen in hearing from a lot of businesses, especially businesses that employ folks in foundational jobs, i.e. trades, public service from police, fire, and so forth, that there is an immense critical workforce shortage, or worker shortage, that needs to be solved. It needs to be solved desperately, and we all have work to do in order to solve that, or else that will stymie Auburn's future growth, as well as the state's growth as well. growth, as well as the state's growth as well. So there's a lot of demand out there for housing, there's very few people who can build it. It's a lot of demand and great paying jobs in Auburn, very few people to fill those jobs. So it is a complete, if you want to look holistic, look at what we need as a city, and hopefully, how our education program can assist in that and prepare people for careers to be career-ready on day one, week one, after leaving high school.
So, Dr. Brown, when you do the minutes, can you please include this, this memo in the minutes from tonight's meeting?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Because it was a special meeting, we don't have any committee reports this evening. So therefore, that brings us to, you have a list of upcoming meetings, quite a few of them coming up in April. Any on here that we are missing? We've got quite a list. All right, if there are, just let me know. So future agenda items, Mr. Mayor, I think you alluded to this being a future agenda item, or the conversation of the joint resolve. Right, any others? All right, seeing none, motion to adjourn, please.
So.
Yeah, I was like, you all want to stay? Thank you, Brian. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.